Activity being started, roll call please.
Dr. Portolino here. Mr. Daughtry.
Here.
Mrs. Fannum.
Here.
Mr. Grau. Mr. Palmer.
Here.
Mr. Petrazzino.
Here.
Mr. Rattaport.
Here.
Ms. Zuckerman here. Dr. Modra.
Here.
Ms. Fiallo. Mr. Sun.
Here.
Underway, please. The United States of America, in the Republic which stands on a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The New Jersey Open Public Meeting Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provision of the Act, the Montville Township Board of Education provided for public notice of this meeting, which included the time, date, and location, that was posted at the Montville Township Municipal Building, all Montville Public Schools, the Montville Public Library, the Montville Township Board of Education Administrative Office Building, the district website, and advertised in the dealer record, the Montville Tap and which are both the board's official newspapers on January 28th, 2024.
High School Report.
Report.
Fiallo.
So we're gonna do past, present, and future format for today. Starting off with the past, so the MTHS had incoming student orientation, which was on Wednesday, February 7th, at 7:00 PM. Incoming students and their parents got a first glimpse into high school life and the rich and varied programs that MTHS has to offer. Three students created pieces of artwork that were selected to be exhibited at the prestigious Fresh Perspectives installation at the Morris Museum in Morristown, New Jersey. Judges selected only 50 pieces from more than 250 submitted. MTHS senior Victoria Zia Bean needle felting entitled "Sunrise on Halaika", along with junior Nicole's works "Charcoal Drawing" called "Crumble", and junior Julia Grabuccella's self-portrait in sunlight done in acrylic paint off canvas for each exhibit. On February 15th, the Chinese Honor Society hosted a Chinese New Year Festival celebration for the Year of the Dragon from 6:00 to 8:00 PM in the cafeteria. The Year of the Dragon is celebrated with the Dragon Dance, as well as Ribbon Dance and Fan Dance, singing instrumental performances, a Hanfu demonstration, and more. Students shared hands-on cultural activities such as chopstick games, ping pong, spinning handkerchiefs, shuttlecock games, origami dragon ribbon lessons, rhythm scoop games, strategies, the pinch pop game, and hand food demonstration. The SEC attended a student leadership conference at Madison High School. They had an opportunity to hear from Mr. James Stroker, who spoke about what it meant to be a leader. Mr. Conley's international business practice firm classes competed in a business plan competition held by the Virtual Enterprises Program. The Charge Caddie team placed second overall and will advance to the national competition in April, and the Ambition Team placed fifth overall. The MTHS forensic team competed this past weekend at Harvard. Recently, seniors Ryan Sun and Raul Polinti advanced to become national merit finalists. This distinction places them in a group of 15,000 students representing less than 1% of U.S. high school graduating seniors. A Holocaust survivor is visiting MTHS Holocaust and genocide students tomorrow in the auditorium. He will share a story of a young boy living in Nazi Germany. A select few students will also get to have lunch with him and ask more questions since there were finalists in his poster contest.
Okay, moving on to some things going on in sports. We have girls' basketball is entering the state tournament as the 13th seed, and they hold a record of 10 to 13. They will play Riverdale Regional High School away on Thursday. The boys' basketball team ended their season last week with a tied record of 12 and 12. They did not have any graduating seniors on the team, so we look forward to seeing them all again next season. The hockey team also ended their season with a ties record of 10 to 10. Their season ended last week in the state tournament, but the players have many great individual career accomplishments. Bowling continues their winning streak at 22 consecutive wins and an undefeated record. They play Brooklyn Park tomorrow for the semifinal round of the state tournament. The boys' wrestling team ended their season last week, losing in the state finals against Mill Valley. They finished with a record of 18 and 8. Senior Luca Vilio was named the district champion. Six more wrestlers pleased in the top three and will also be moving on to regionals. The girls and boys swim teams had their most successful season of years and secured four wins this season within the past 10 seasons, which is an amazing accomplishment. They ended their season at the end of January, and the boys ended with a record of 3 and 7, while the girls ended 5 and 6. And then finally, track and field continues as six athletes move on and compete at the Group Two Championships then at Armory. Junior runner Alex Pedloff put MTHS on the map as he competed in the middle rows games two weeks ago. Now, moving on to some things happening in the future. We have the MTHS musical, which is going to be running from February 29th to March 3rd. The tickets went on sale February 5th, and the play this year is Spillers. FPLA will be having their annual state leadership conference trip to Harrah's and Atlantic City from March 11th to March 13th. Key Club will be having their annual volleyball marathon on March 8th. Signups for this open on February 14th, and this year's theme is around the world, where each team will achieve one hundred and twenty shows. On March 18th, our MTHS students will be spending the day at Hilldale to teach the students there about financial literacy. And then finally, the annual Pinky Bell tour trip to Philadelphia will be on Thursday, March 21st.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations, everybody.
Okay, Super Ten's Court.
Well, we have a packed house. You know that's not for us, so there must be somebody else going on. Mrs. Nels, did you want to come up? Or, alright, so we have, I'll just touch you to the each of us. Alright, great.
Good evening. Good evening, everyone. My name is Jo Serra, on the first floor, as most of you know. It's so nice to see so many parents here. Yep, mom, and we have our fourth and fifth grade chorus directed by Ms. Vera Brin.
Good evening, and thank you for having us. I am Brandon Turmalt, and these are select fourth and fifth grade chorus members. They'll be performing for you tonight, "America," arranged by Sally Alford. I don't know why.
Thank you so much, parents. You may walk quietly down, 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 down. Oh, folks, never mind the lights.
If you stand at the far side, it's that your picture will be taken. Those two in the back row, when I say three, stand, and we'll take photos, okay? In the back row, when I say three, ready? One, two, three. Beautiful, you guys are beautiful.
First row, go back around, the other thing. First row.
Before they would, I just said, "We're to the each of us," before they said that.
Wait, wait, friends. They wanted to say something to us before we go.
Just a second. It was a great performance, we're so proud of all of you. Couple of meetings, oh, my meeting and the last meeting, you had the opportunity to see the Lizar course, and for those who didn't get a chance to see it, that was an exceptional performance, and when I say exceptional, I just mean that middle school courses just shouldn't be that good, something special. So, I really hope that all of you, especially the fifth graders, will stick with it, and when you get to Lizar, join that course also, because it's an exceptional experience, and you won't regret it, it's a once-in-a-lifetime experience, I just can't sit up strong enough.
And I think that, at the same meeting, I mentioned, the reason we have such a good program here is because it starts in elementary schools, and you've done a wonderful job, the kids are great, and this is why Montville is well-known for its outstanding musicals in high school as well as Lizar. But thank you all for the performance. Thank you for the kind words.
Thank you. For a wonderful performance, we want to thank you. Thank you to all of the parents, whoever you're doing, and help us, support us, and bring your students out tonight, and we live for you.
Georgie, that was great. I love your hair.
So, each quarter, we bring up a representative of the high school, so we know if a running streak to the other. Mr. Rattaport's gonna talk about the academics here at the high school. Who do you mean? You can raise your hand. Alright. Who do you, I won't be saying. And the final house, our shop starts the second week, we believe, 2023, 2024. Tonight starts, we're nominated by the.
Flower.
Oh, alright, that's right. Tonight starts, we're nominated by faculty members, we're five, three categories, and the winners were selected by Rachel Peck. In addition to the recognition of these wonderful students, Sunrise Shopper generously donates $1,000 to the class in 2024. Please join me in congratulating each of our stars this evening. In the field of academics, congratulations to Rachel Peck. Teachers who nominated Rachel's summer center, Rachel is one of the most thoughtful, effective, and dedicated students that they've ever had the privilege of teaching. Rachel has demonstrated a passion for learning and a desire for book, as evidenced by increasingly challenging coursework, leading the last four years. For example, Rachel took just three hours of the classes during the freshman year, before running away. By junior year, Rachel has enrolled in three AP level classes, and has taken four this year, not including our running science design research. Although Rachel's 4.4+ GPA is impressive, her true goal is the mastery of new content and collaboration with peers. To accomplish that, Rachel is involved in several extracurricular activities, as editor and chief of the podium Rachel, a dedicated team who carefully revises and edits staff articles to maintain a high quality content. Rachel also serves as secretary of the MTHS peers' leaders, and this year self-managed providing support to these throughout the year, as a member of the classroom. Lastly, as a family member and president of Project Smile, Rachel initiated the chapter to bring joy to pediatric hospital states. Through successful fundraisers, Rachel is able to purchase toys for children in hospitals, based on hospital wish lists, and often personally leads hospital businesses to write in the days of pediatric patients. Rachel received acceptance letters to many top universities, and is still deciding and ready to pursue the fall of plans to pursue a career in pediatric occupational therapy and education. In the field of athletics, congratulations to Alexis Sharer. As one of the only female students to ever participate on a varsity high school team, Alexis seemingly makes history and adds to her impressive way of accomplishments each time she hits the ice. For example, Alexis is a two-time recipient of the DOT Class Defensive Player of the Year Award, and winner of the 2023 Shuret Cup. Alexis also received an MCSSI HL Shuret Division Honorable Mentioner, and early spot on the All-Star team. Additionally, just a few weeks ago, Alexis scored a 1,000th save, which is a remarkable milestone for high school hockey. For Montville, only two other students have achieved the statistic of history. In cub hockey, Alexis earned recognition as an Atlantic Girls Hockey Federation All-Star in 2023 through New Jersey Bandits 19 and 20, and achieved district champion status in 2022 in New Jersey Ballet's 16 and 20. Alexis was also selected for the ABH A Girls District Act in 2023. Alexis's talents extend to flag football, where she earned the Ball Division Award, and was named for the second-team offense as a running back in the New Jersey High School Girls Black Football. Beyond the great headfield, Alexis earned the Excellence Award of Visual Arts during the junior year, and is taking a rigorous coursework this year, including two AP level classes. Alexis is still deciding on which universities to attend in the fall of plans to enter architecture, and inspires to continue her high school career in Chulip. Again, congratulations. In the field of arts, congratulations to Joseph Amoroso. For the past four years, Joseph has sustained incredible performances fueled by unmatched passion and love for the arts. Currently, he holds the role of running footman, Joe's dedication to our theater program, Co-Living Leadership roles, as the choir president and president of the Montville Theater Company. Joe's leadership in these roles highlight his commitment to fostering a vibrant artistic community within our school. Additionally, Joe is an inductee into the Tri-End Music Artist Society, choreographer for the MTHS at the Pelican Impulse. Joe also manifests his musical talents to programs outside of MTHS. For example, Joe is the second ranked 10th in one of the prestigious New Jersey Arts State Courts. Joe is also actively engaged in supporting arts community service, volunteering at the Mayor Performing Arts Academy, which brings musical pathways to hospitals, nursing homes, fundraising for those in need. More locally, Joe goes back to early through reach, and works to support incoming students through town. Joe is also inducted into the National Art Society, having attained a 4.1+ GPA during his junior year. Joe is still deciding which college to attend in the fall, but has auditioned over 15 programs in pursuit of a Bachelor of Fine Arts and Musical Review. Again, congratulations. In the field of community service, congratulations to Ava Zora. Ava's service to our local communities extends to the past seven universities, a valuable member of Pathways, Care Enters, Reach, Ed Locks, and Conversations to Remind. In these clubs, Ava supports a wide range of people in the youth, elderly, adult with dementia, children with disabilities, pure struggling with mental health, and being more privileged. Ava is most known for her incredible work to create the chapter of the Best Buddies of MTHS. The Best Buddies Program fosters inclusion and acceptance of especially its population, and Eva's leadership and as chapter president has led to some exceptional lasting relationships in the world. Ava's kindness, compassion for others, and eagerness to help has also led to some other positive changes. For example, Ava was at the forefront of an initiative organizing a seminar introducing the Lighthouse Conundrum of the Lighthouse Project on stupendous health and suicide. Through her internship, Ava worked with leaders in this project, including the director of Stanley Partners, who assisted campaigns with gun registration. Ava works to make for lives of those who struggle to learn your better, and her business and labor service, and putting needs of others over your own. In addition to the time she spends volunteering, Ava offers tours through the Italian Art Society and National Art Society. Additionally, Ava is a leader on the varsity cheerleading team, who no longer lives in the classroom, proudly maintaining a 4.4+ career. Ava just learned that she was offered a second seat at the top schools, and is still waiting to decide which one she's going to attend, receiving a generous scholarship for one of them. She does an intensive in psychology before entering the university. In the field of leadership, congratulations to Laura Mott. Rob stands as an exemplary student who takes pride in his multifaceted leadership roles across various groups and organizations. As the New Jersey FPLA State Lead Master, he represents over 7,000 members, organizing the chapter website, including statewide conferences and workshops. His dedication is further evident as the president of the Montville Township High School's FPLA chapter, where he leads a sizable membership of community service best people that's in the community of Dallas. Rob has one of the notable personal achievements, including second place nationally in the E business competitive event, and first place at the state level. As vice president of Florence, who not only leads a team of instructors, but has also achieved phenomenal success in debates, qualifying for national tournaments, and earning high postings in university competitions. Rob's leadership extends to computer thought, where he organizes events and debates, and various opportunities, urging earning prestigious awards such as the AIBAC Scholarship, Challenge Winner, and Cyber Start National Scholar. As the captain of the MTHS robotics, Rob has led his team to regional victories, state championships, and world championship qualifications. His commitment to community service is also reflected in his role as Team Montville for SeaWorld International, contributing over 100 hours of community service and environs and issues. Additionally, Rob is the captain of the junior varsity tennis team, active member of Reach, inductee into the Spanish Art Society and National Art Society, and has recently, as you heard tonight, been selected as a national charity scholarship finalist, solidifying his status as an outstanding student. Rob is still deciding on which university to attend in the fall, and is the major in computer science. Again, congratulations to Rob, and to all of our second-year curators. Thank you for coming out tonight, you're welcome to stay and join us, we have an auditor board, and we're going to the rest of the board meeting, because I have somebody who has some schoolwork to do tonight, who understand that you're scared. These board meetings are just wonderful opportunities for us to showcase the wonderful work that our students are doing, and it's just great to get just a little smattering of what's going on every day in our schools, so we really appreciate the teachers, as well as the students coming out tonight, and of course, the parent support. So that's a lot of the good news, and we're going to continue with the good news. I want to thank the business office for doing such a wonderful job with our budget for the past several years, and this one, I want to introduce our guest speaker tonight.
Just as a background, at the end of each year, all of these great things that occur with the kids are basically boiled down into dollars and cents, and then reported as part of a annual comprehensive financial report. That document tells the story in numbers of all the different things that went on during the school year, to the kids, to the staff, to everything that went on. And so, at the end of that, we have our auditors, our district auditors, from Orange County and Higgins, come in and do an audit of that comprehensive annual financial report, and I'd like to introduce Rob Hay, who's going to do a presentation on that report and the outcome of the audit.
I'm just about to pull up the clip. Good?
Yep.
A fax to follow after that, but everyone heard the audit, and they, uh, got it down. So as Pateen said, this is a pre-presentation on your '22-'23 annual audit, so this was for your fiscal year in the June 30th of '23. It's an audit that's obviously required by the state, due to all districts in the state. There's two reports that are required to be filed with the state. One is prepared by the district, which is your annual comprehensive financial report, includes all your financial statements, and your no disclosures required under generally accepted accounting principles. And also, in that report is our opinions, our audit opinions, which is basically the end result of the audit. The second report is what we call the audit manager report, that is discussing the results of the audit, with any recommendations that would require corrective action as a result of our audit procedures. Just to talk about the two reports a little bit, in the comprehensive financial report, like I said, you receive three opinions from us, audit opinions. One is on your financial statements, on whether they're presented in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. Second opinion is on your internal controls over your financial reporting, so that's more of a audit of your, you know, your day-to-day policies and procedures, and how you arrive at your financial statements and numbers. Third opinion is on your federal-state grant program, so as you receive federal-state grants for all your programs, we're required to audit specific programs to make sure you're compliant with the requirements. In all three opinions, you receive what we call unmodified opinions, basically the highest level of assurance we can give as auditors. You basically start at that unmodified level, and if something happens during the audit, that would, uh, that must reduce that level of assurance that would happen, but in this instance, you did, so you have received what we call three clean. would happen, but in this instance, you did. So you have received what we call three clean opinions or unmodified opinions on all three instances. Talk about the numbers a little bit. You ended the year, your total fund balance, which is really after all your revenues are collected from your budget and your budget is spent, you were down about $1.3 million from the previous year. And that was really just a result of, as the revenues and appropriations are spent, and you use some of the money to fund your budget. That's really the end result at the end of the year. But all in all, you have plenty of money left. You have a capital reserve fund of about five and a half million left at the end of June of '23 on committed funds. That's really funds for future capital purposes before you can choose to withdraw that money during the year by board resolution for projects in the facilities plan, or through your budget process to fund capital improvements of your facilities. You also have about $1.2 billion in maintenance reserves. Remember, some of the capital reserves are for maintenance of your buildings, not so much capital improvement, but maintenance of your existing facilities. And again, that money can be withdrawn during the year by board resolution or through your budget process. And then what we call is your, I think, result of your surplus balance, your unsigned fund balance, about $2.6 million. That's really your free and clear money moving forward into next year's budget cycle. So as for '24-'25 budget comprehensive, that's the money you kind of have set aside, surplus, moving into the next year. Last year, to give you an comparison, in current year's budget, you're using about $1.7 million of your unsigned money to fund this year's budget. So moving into next year, you're, you know, you're ahead of where you are for next year. So all in all, from an opinion standpoint, you're very positive, receiving three unmodified opinions, and your financials are pretty consistent with previous year. And I think you could stand to be focusing on your next year's budget. Just to talk about the results of the audit at this point, really good news comes in in your audit management report. You received no audit recommendations, must have required corrective action. So that's very positive. Probably feel throughout the state, there's not, you know, a few representatives, probably about eight or nine in school. There's not too many that go out with no audit recommendations. Here's what Kantine can tell you. We're here for several weeks, and remember, we're looking through a lot of stuff. So we look at different stuff every year. But it really had nothing that will see, you know, we have an exit conference at the end of the audit with the administration, go through some of the minor things, and see that, you know, my feet want to be corrected. But there's nothing that will close to the level of what we call audit recommendation under requiring the kind of audit code for corrective action. So all in all, very positive audit on the opinion front, receiving a modified opinion. Your financial statements are fairly stable, and you see no audit recommendations, which is really positive. So I'd like to thank Kantine for the audit process. And we have to take any questions to the board on the audit or any order.
No questions, Rob. But I just wanted to just share a point and thank Kantine and her staff for year after year having positive audit reports, always three good opinions, always unmodified. And I know it wasn't too easy, but Rob, 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 just everything.
Any other questions for the auditor?
Yeah, I'll be with Debbie Downey. First of all, thank you, Kantine and all of her staff. But is there anywhere, you know, we're doing so good. Is it possible for us to improve anywhere?
Yeah, like I said, we do have an exit conference, you know, with the administration that goes through, you know, pretty much every little thing we found that necessarily requires an audit recommendation. Because audit recommendation really results in when you have a, you know, one of your numbers in your financial statements are misstated dearly, or if you have some sort of policy or procedure that's not being followed that, you know, would need to be corrected, you didn't follow the statutory regulation that the state requires. Those are many things that would require an audit recommendation. But yeah, as we go through the audit, we do find things that we just, you know, we recommend, you know, just do not do the audit, but for an exit conference, say, you know, we found this battery yesterday, which is, you know, minor for the audit, but it's something you might want to correct for next year. So it doesn't necessarily become audit recommendation in future. So, you know, there are improvements that are made through the exit conference when we go through the administration, but it's not something that rises to the level of audit recommendation.
And just as a summary of that, so after we meet with Rob to go through that, we then go back and analyze what caused the particular item that he's bringing up in order for us to adjust our procedures district-wide to address it so it doesn't come up a second time. And I think pretty much you don't ask us two things two years in a row and the same thing. It's be resolved.
Right, that's right. That's really one of our procedures. You know, when next year's audit comes, we'll go back to last year's audit, because obviously we're making sure we'll also go back to it. But so, hey, what things that we talked about last year, we'd like to see improved. You know, and if they do come up again, we'll discuss again. But, you know, generally those aren't corrected for the next year, and, you know, we'll look at it next year, and try to cover, can't cover everything in one year, because, you know, we'll be here for six months to go. And we want to cover every transaction that happens throughout the year. We kind of focus on different areas. So, you know, the improvements are made through the exit conference. And I said, next year, we'll do that to make sure that those changes are covered and so.
I think that when I first joined the board, we did have a few things that would come up on occasion. But in recent years, Kantine's done an excellent job of taking what we have and working with it, improving it, and we come up clean every time. We've really done a great job in the office, done a great job in the board in the office. And I assume attendance, passion, does it? Doing a good job too.
So, well, we appreciate the relationship. We haven't given us advice along the way. So we really will work with you as well. Again, I just want to thank Diane and Kantine as well, with everything they do to make this budget. Now, this is a $100 million budget, and to be this clean every single year, in and out, just shows a lot of the work that everybody does to get this this way. I've worked in several districts, and I've never had such consistency with a clean audits. So that's a credit to everybody that works on that. So I appreciate that. I appreciate you coming out tonight. So if you're wondering how many days left are in school, if we're down in an elementary school. So we're about, I think tomorrow, seventy-five days of school left. The students were celebrating a hundred days of school when I was there. I gave a day. So it was really interesting how they counted down the school year. So it's amazing how fast it goes. Just one quick thing about snow days, the way we do announcements. We changed the way we do them now, where we went to our new website. So with that and the way we communicate to the staff and to the community, we are now ADA compliant, and we also are now translating everything into thirty-one languages, I believe. So you don't get my personalized voice on these messages. I'm sorry about that. However, it is so that we can communicate more effectively to our community. And that was a conscious decision made over this past year when we switched our communication systems. So I just wanted to get you that. If you, yeah, if you want to change anything, you have to just go into the system, and you just click off on the different box if you want it in a different language or something like that. You do that personally if you're a parent, go in there and figure out how to get that information directly to you. As you heard tonight, the Morris Museum is exhibiting three works of art for our high school students. Only fifty of two hundred, no, only fifty of two hundred and fifty pieces submitted were actually accepted. So that three of our works of art, that was quite an accomplishment. On L31, on our agenda tonight, you'll see that we are actually rescinding a one-sixth salary for Ava's teacher, who is going to be receiving the NJGPA portfolio assessment that's going to be a class if needed. But because all of our seniors have passed the state assessment for the graduation requirement, that need is no longer warranted. So we're rescinding that, and that's really good news. I also have here the, twice a year, we have to report out on the student safety data system, and we'll tell you what's going on regarding incidents, violence, vandalism, substance abuse, weapons, and so on, and HIV. There were twenty-five incidents in total. Five of them, they were considered, classified as violence. We had two small ball fights, but they weren't really fights. They were scuffles, but they have to be categorized that way. We had five vandalism incidents. This is only for the past six months, first happening this school year. Five vandalism incidents at the high school, one substance abuse at the high school, zero weapons. And we had fourteen confirmed cases of HIV, harassment, intimidation, bullying over the first six months. There were thirty-five that were alleged, and only fourteen that were actually confirmed and they fit the definition. Two at the high school, eleven at the middle school, and one at Willie Mason. The reason for middle school being a little bit higher than the others is that's middle school. They are at that age, when they're still trying to figure things out. They say some inappropriate things. All of this is just unfortunate, and it is just name-calling, and it's handled appropriately through, you know, working with the students, counseling them through them, and making sure they understand how their words and actions can hurt others. But when you think about it, we have thirty-five hundred students, and fourteen incidents in six months, that just shows you the quality of what's going on in our schools. And we're very proud of those numbers. And I just want to shed some light on something that we don't talk about too much. These guys work behind the scenes, the IT, the information technology department. They only took a very large project recently, and they replaced our domain controllers, which come aside with the new laptop deployment to our faculty and staff. Just to give us some perspective, it's like replacing tires on the movie car. These guys work very late, several nights, and the servers are the most critical to operate for, you know, you can understand the logistics and everything going on with our data and technology. But literally, nothing else works in the district without the servers and everything up and running. And much of the work was done without interruption to any of our users. As part of this domain controller upgrade, we'll also be able to upgrade the software running on them and all the blocked compromised passwords. So we've added eighty-five million compromised passwords to block on that list. And that brings the total database to over eight-hundred million blocked passwords, database things, and things that we know about. And that's just continually trying to keep our systems safe from any kind of hackers that are out there, or anything that's going on like that. So, you know, you don't think about it when everything's running really well and that stuff, but there's a lot of work that goes on behind the scenes to keep our students, as well as our staff, and our district safe. So a big round of applause to all those guys in the IT department for everything they do. Thank you all. We move on to delegate liaison reports. And we just point out that good news at our school. It's like, for today, we're in the scene. We have a section in our agenda outlining additional great news from our school. So facilities and finance, Karen, you have a report?
I have a report.
You do?
We had earlier, we're looking forward to starting a discussion on the 2025 budget. We'll wait until later, stay a minute, we should come in sometime this week, and the committee will probably get together again at that point.
Critical, Michelle?
It's going to be sending a meeting, we're getting this very great conference after the meeting, we have some of the first items.
Policy, Joe?
We have a meeting on Wednesday, February 28th.
Communications, Mike Rapp, for the door. Okay, safety, Christine?
No report.
Delegate, New Jersey School Boards, Karen?
So the last few days of January, the officers of New Jersey School Boards attended the National School Boards Association meeting. We attended their equity and advocacy programs. This culminated with a day on the Hill, where we visited a number of our representatives, including Congressman Andrew Kim, Congressman Josh Gotmeyer, Congressman Bala, Congressman Tom Kane, Senator Cory Bookware, Congressman Bill Pascoe, Congressman Morcos, Congresswoman Mindy Sherrill. And these were selected based on the, the board members and officers where they live, basically. That's how we decided that we would visit those representatives. And we talked about a variety of things, and shared some of our concerns and challenges, which included the federal government to fully fund ITDA, which does not disappoint, issues and challenges with mental health, universal meals, teacher shortage. So many things were discussed. They were quite receptive to our concerns. I just wanted to bring to the board's attention a law that was signed just a few weeks ago. It's S4209. It allows districts to move back to the April election without requiring a vote vote. Is that something the board's interested in? It's now possible. And that's it.
Okay, thank you. Morris County School Board, Michelle?
Yeah, Morris County had a hybrid meeting on February 8th. Then there's a lot of ground table discussions occurred, and after Karen wrote us the information, we're going to special programs. But the Morris County School Board website has more resources from that meeting. So I think we could make it to go and look at that. And there's two more meetings this year. Wednesday, March 20th, is, that's a county called Morris, is the Unsettled Heroes Awards ceremony. And May 2nd is a high, for leaving, celebrating the county teacher of the year and other recognized board members. And that'll be a roster.
Thank you. Joe, Morris County Educational Services. From MetLife Red Day, we also had an audit for the survey to us, as well as the business office, very audit comparison to do. And for awareness council?
For awareness council, Met off February 4th. They're working on gathering resources for recovery of education services that will be posted on the county website, as well as their technical page. They're also going to be getting North Care, and by that, can touch roads, so it's available. It's a good target. The board, you should have global business as well, so they will also be there.
So Karen, Cedar Hill?
No report.
Joe, Valley View? Valley View is going to be on March 14th. It's going to be in person, in virtual. Charles will be there, buying samples from Hopwash, as they look to expand their, I think. John, Willie Mason?
Willie Mason among other schools, and he would be heading Gaha Outlets. And if they look forward to that, I think the mom is going to be charged on that one, but that's all we got.
Can you understand the rules of Gaha?
Yeah, I still have a little question. I might add something.
My karma, wouldn't I?
No.
But Lazar, Christine?
Our next meeting will be on March 18th.
Okay, and then, Mike Rapp, for the high school?
No report.
Okay, negotiations committees, NTAA initiative meeting, Karen?
So I participated virtually. I was recovering from an illness. But it was a very positive meeting as usual, very friendly and respectful. It was very productive. There was a lot of discussion on clarifying items on proposals. And also, we were able to dispense with a couple of items. And we'll be again next Tuesday. We'll forward to attending that in person.
And although Charlie's not here, that NTAA and NCSIA meeting in a couple weeks, I believe, correct? Okay, we need to report. We got one. Okay, good, cool. So for the NTSA, we met on February 7th. We had a very positive meeting as well, we exchanged proposals. There's a tweet instead of a word. And anyone with the NTAA, anyone who's in the board? Okay, and we'll move on. We'll move on to the first part, pelvic participation session. These are for items on the agenda. If you have comments or questions about items on the agenda, invite me to the microphone, give us your name, and please press. Seeing none? Oh, we got one.
So just to be a little bit more, if you drive a while, just a clarification, the IDA, have you said? What is that?
It's money provided by the federal government to help support extraordinary special education needs. It should cover up forty percent, but the best number of years has only covered thirteen to fourteen percent.
And then, S, we should all line, exactly?
It is S4209, and it's now law of sign.
Okay, but you're expecting that? I'm sorry, I didn't know.
I'm glad you're asking. It would allow, we are now in the November election. It would allow, we are now in the November election with no budget vote. So if the last school district is moved to an April election with no, uh, thank you so much.
Any other questions? Okay, then, I'll close that, move on, ask for a resolution on items I through N?
Someone?
Second, maybe, second, okay. Any questions on the minutes? Section J? Section K? Please, section L, you know, section E.
Yeah, so we have retirement, section L two, page nine. We have Mary Merk, who's gonna be retiring. She's a school psychologist and has been with the district since nineteen ninety-five. She has had the honor of serving in the Montfort Township School District with students at every grade level. Approximately twelve years ago, Mary was asked to lead the team as the case manager when the structured integrated learning, or the SIL program at the Zard Middle School was initially developed. Her leadership, expertise, and professionalism has helped establish the SIL program up to date. We want to thank her for her service to the students and the families in Montfort Township. And we wish her well.
Any other questions on section L? Section M? Section N, policy? Okay, uh, all of those, please?
Dr. Quarterino?
Yes.
Ms. Suckerman?
Yes.
Mr. Dotrey?
Yes.
Mrs. Fanna?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
Mr. Petrazina?
Yes.
Mr. Rappaport?
Epstein, L five, yes, everything else?
Dr. Woodburn?
Hi, yes.
Uh, we have no additional closed session. So moving on to section Q, old business, and section R, new business. Or we'll, is that, we have a score on the referendum?
So the board asked me a while ago to, you know, do a post-analysis after the referendum. And I provided that with their information in memo format, two actually, two different memos, last month and this month. And then to report out publicly a little bit of some of the options that we have moving forward. And we started a little bit of discussion about that. So, uh, when we voted in December for the referendum, we had two questions. Eighteen point six percent of the registered voters came out and voted. For question number one, three hundred and thirty-five more votes were against the actual question for question number one, which was about five percent of the vote. Question two was a little, was fewer votes that defeated that question. Looking back over the past thirty years, we've had six referendums, three that have passed and three have not. So we're batting fifty percent right there. And then we've received feedback from the community, from the board. The board discussed this a little bit in December, a little bit more since then. And we gathered feedback and we shared it out with the board members. So one question was, if we went out for the referendum again, what would be the timeline? So I just put it out there, and actually, we're at the same point we were at last year. So if we decided to go out for another referendum, it would be pretty much the same type of phasing that we're looking at. Discussions would be going on now. We'd have to talk to the architects shortly. If you decide to go out with the exact same questions, so question two on the referendum, which was about the safety and HVAC systems, and you didn't modify anything, of course, that would then be fast-tracked and go a little quicker. But if you decided to just say add the cafeterias or modify in some ways, that might require a little bit more attention at the state level, as well as with the architects. But, uh, so you could be in the spring if you wanted to go out then. You have to submit proposals to the state. You'd be looking at a three to six month timeline again, and going out to the community. You have three options. You could go out to vote in September, November with the general election, or December. I just put it up there December, just because of the timeline and kind of where we are right now. But you do have the other two options as well. With that said, then you'd have to go out and inform the public again about your options, which will bring you, you know, up until December, and vote, and succeed in. Then you'd go into phase five, which is, you know, completing some of the projects for the years shortly thereafter. So that's roughly the timeline if you had to go out again right now. So if you wanted to go out for question two exactly as it is, or was, back in December, that was a seventeen million dollar total. Five point eight of that was in state aid, and that would have a tax impact of eighty-four dollars per household. If you decided to add the cafeterias, the cafeterias, there were three of them at three of the elementary schools. That would add another ten point eight million dollars. And, uh, and that's it. There was no state aid associated with that. So the new referendum total would be about twenty-eight million dollars. You'd probably get about six point two million dollars in state aid. And the tax impact, and I'm just approximating right there, would probably be about a hundred and forty dollars per household. So the third option, so that's option one, option two. The third option is to accept the voter's decision, what they decided upon back in December, and start moving forward. The business office and I have worked together with that in mind, because we have not had any kind of resolution by the board. So we've moved forward with the defeated resolution. So what does that mean? We have to address the small group construction rooms and start putting in permanent walls. We have no classrooms in the hallways. Investigating locations of different, different moving district programs around a little bit. So we might have consolidated some programs and maybe use them a little more efficiently. And then we update our long-range facilities plan. The idea is that we did investigate. We did look into trailers prior when we were doing a whole, a full map of the referendum and while we were at the referendum. Also moving the eighth grade to the high school, preschool programs to the high school. Those are the things we looked at. All of them had, you know, pluses and minuses to them. And we discussed them in public before, and nothing has really changed with the reasons why we would not or would do those. And then the other thing is, what we talked about along the campaign trail there was we're gonna have to increase class size as necessary, as we see more students moving in. And that's the plan we're doing right now as we move forward. Also, while we were out there informing the public, people said, okay, what would happen if it gets shut down? Well, we informed everybody about that. We told them that things would have to be postponed. So for instance, some of the projects that we told you about was high school or the auditorium renovations would be postponed, the renovations to the softball field, the science rooms at the Zard would be postponed, HVAC upgrades, as well as the security vestibles. We'll still try to get to them, but they are all gonna be postponed, and we'll have further discussion about that. So just taking a look at the current capital reserves plan and building in some of the things I just mentioned, we're just trying to walk you through a draft version of what the next couple of years could look like. This is all subject to change, and we're gonna be having more discussions about this. But I just wanted to get it out there a little bit. Just to say roughly, our capital reserves budget is around ten million dollars or a little less. So you have ten million dollars to help address all the, you know, issues that we have to address here in the district. So at the high school, we have to do some roof replacements. At the Zard, we have to start beginning doing the HVAC system. So we start at the sixth grade wing. Looking at the parking lot repairs at Cedar Hill, and maybe adding interior security vestal or value. You see that total comes out to four point four million dollars. One point five of that, uh, was part of the referendum, as well as the security vestal at a hundred and thirty-seven thousand. The following year, so that would be this summer. Uh, next, next year, then we'd be looking into the high school electrical fire alarm system, replacement of doors and barbers at the elementary schools and the middle school. And then Dilldale's starting to get the security vestal and some other facade repairs. And that total will come out to about five million dollars. Three years from now, we would have to then start committing more of our resources to finish off the HVAC systems and upgrade the seventh and eighth grade wings, a total of three million. And in twenty-twenty-seven, maybe we'd be able to get to the auditorium and the softball renovations coming to three point five. If you look at those totals, you know, you've got three million, three million, four million, five million. That adds up more than ten million dollars. So each year, as we are, you know, conserving some of our budget, we try to put money ahead into the capital reserves to backfill some of the money we're using. So we have to keep on, you know, backfilling that, still tackling these projects. Unfortunately, looking at this capital reserves plan, this draft plan that I have right now, it really completes a lot of our capital reserves. And we start getting down to below the one million dollar mark, which is a little, a little scary for a district this size. So these are just things that we have to be aware of. Again, we'll be looking at this as we move forward, and we'll be talking about this openly and publicly. In our maintenance reserves, we're looking at one point seven million dollars in plans for the summer. That would be, you know, going over the roof ceiling. Uh, that is actually coming out of the log grants. That's money coming out to the state that will match money that we'll have to put in as well. And we're looking at some painting. The schools have not been painted interiorly. We do the hallways, but we don't do all the closets and bathrooms and all the different classrooms every couple of years. So there are bad needs for that kind of repair. Park and lot extension and value due, things like that, so that would come out to one point seven. Next year, twenty-twenty-five, we'd be looking at some more permanent small group construction with the wires. Again, doing some more paint. That's one point two million that would come out of maintenance reserves. So what does that leave us with? That leaves us with the future, and I just thought it'd open ended like that. But we still haven't addressed the three other security vestibles and the HVAC upgrades that we talked about that were quartered in the referendum. That still leaves us with twelve million dollars worth of projects that we still have to attend to after the four or five years that I just brought up here. And we even have to just start addressing that in year five to year ten. And that's excluding any other types of things that may pop up. So it's a pretty good plan as we move forward, accepting the way of the voters right now, and we move forward. But, uh, you know, as things pop up, we have to change things around a little bit and see what we're going forward. And, uh, so the next steps we're gonna be, just, we have to start prioritizing our capital movements over the next couple of years. Create a new five-year long-range facility plan, and discuss with the board how best we want to move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Did you just be very elaborate on the present needs, changing and evolving needs of our student population and why it's important to break up classrooms and how best to get rid of classrooms and class sizes right now? Can you talk about the growth of the facility? Growth and also the changing nature of student population, if you have to deal with?
Yeah, so, uh, as we were sharing, informing the public when we were out there, talking a lot of stuff, we're getting, you know, there are changes in our population. We needed more small group construction. We talked about that for special ed needs. We have English, English language learners. We have more students that are coming in that, uh, English is a secondary or a third language to their vocabulary. So we'd like, just for instance, last year alone, we had seventy-five English language learners. Right now, we're over a hundred and ten, and that number's gonna continue to grow as more and more students are moving into our district. We have the apartments that have gone online now, and we're seeing more people moving in this summer. And we believe some of the housing is gonna start moving with interest rates going down. We're gonna see more and more people moving into the district. Uh, so those are just some of our needs, special ed needs. Again, we're consolidating some of the programs, especially some of the elementary schools, to make better use of some of our buildings that really exist. And as I said before, we're taking the classrooms that we had in the hallway, out of the hallway, moving into the classroom, which then pushes, you know, I have to move up the enrollment of the other classrooms, because that means we took away a classroom where those students were moving in.
Any questions?
I guess comparing this referendum to the last one. The last one passed pretty easily because we were getting forty percent of the state. We basically got seventeen million dollars worth of stuff at ten million dollars. Now, this referendum is considerably less, and if I'm not mistaken, I think what we were told is that the thing is that it's new construction. We don't get the state aid. But it is repair or upgrade the old construction. We did it?
Correct.
Okay, so let me ask you this. Out of all the projects on your wish list, regardless of whether or not they are in the last referendum, which of those projects would qualify for the forty percent? We have a list of that. Right, so that, uh, just showing you. So the, the one column on the right there, you'll see, you'd see the HVAC systems. They were receiving money. The auditorium gets some money. That was not part of our referendum. And HVAC again, the replacements for the door, I'm sorry. The, uh, the security vestal would have gotten some money. That's it. Okay, and we might get a little bit of money for the electrical fire alarm system and the replacement of the doors. I'm just saying, can we put together, see what a package looks like if you take all the projects that you think are eligible for a substantial amount of state? I'm not talking about ten percent. I mean, it's forty percent or close to it. The types of, the types of things that we could, you know, spend six dollars to get ten dollars worth of stuff. And maybe that might be something to look forward to and want to go again. Right, so if you're looking at question two, that was seventeen million. You already get five point eight million dollars in state aid. If we took a look at some of the projects you just mentioned, you know, if we're gonna go back to significance, maybe you get another million in state aid. That's still, fact of the matter, quick that way. Right? Yeah, just, so the HVAC, it said sixteen million dollars. We got five point five in state aid. That's about forty percent. I just wanted to make that clear. Right, those are the numbers that we share along the way. Right, the state is not gonna get to include this fact, you know, exactly. We calculated everything out. Right, the state does, it's hard to figure out exactly how the state calculates everything. But, um, so the number doesn't come out as high as you would think. So I, that's why I was just saying that maybe you might get one more million dollars if you add some of these other things. See, I've just been looking for, listening to say, here are the projects where you can get a portion of state that might be easier self than tax. Yeah, we can put it together, but, you know, the seventeen million, as we showed you when we went out for question two, was the bulk of it. So we can put it together for you. It's not gonna increase it that much, but we can get that for you.
I was just wanting to do that. Question two did fail, unfortunately. Uh, it was voted down regardless, you know, but it is something to consider.
Well, security, for example, under twenty-eight thousand dollars total, seventy-three thousand in state aid. That's not even close to forty percent. But HVAC might, the auditorium might, the other ones might, so we wouldn't do these. We'd get a big amount of stuff. Right, but you just quickly add some of these things up, and I'll say it's just four million dollars there, you know, to forty percent. Not less than forty percent, but, you know, but four million dollars. But we'll look at it.
Joe? So I know you're talking about this, but that's what we're planning on doing this. I told you everything last year, so maybe we went ahead and you also looked at the situation you were considering. Go for it, ready?
Right, that's, that's the board discussing. I definitely see that as a discussion.
Michelle?
So, um, what I'm understanding is that basically you're proceeding with the knowledge that the referendum didn't pass. You presented two potential alternatives, uh, aside from just proceeding as it is in pass. One is to go potentially out for a referendum, I guess, according to December timeline. We just go for the questions that were questioned two. The other is a new kind of hybrid question, if you will, which is question two, that's the cafeterias. Um, that's, like, correct?
Correct, and then, uh, Mr. Palmer is just saying, one more option, add a different package, yes?
So, um, I agree with what Joe was saying. I feel like, I felt very strongly that this should go out. We had this knowledge. The administration recommended that their best course of action is that we try to go for a referendum, because they thought that would be the best way to address all of these issues that they see coming down the path. The community had the opportunity to be educated about it. They had the opportunity to vote on both questions, and both questions failed. I do think that, thank goodness, we have a very responsible, wonderful administration who is prepared for any eventuality and is moving forward. I think we might not like all the decisions that have been made as a result. I think that there's gonna be some tough choices. And I think, you know, we'll see what happens over the next few years. I've heard that a lot in the feedback, that people seem to say they'd like to see how this really all plays out and so forth. I, I, I think that the administration proceeding, as they said they have been, and, and trying to... I think that the administration proceeding, as they said they have been, and trying to address all these eventualities, concerns they have right now, would be my thought as to how we should proceed and keep looking for potential ways to maybe get state aid or like investigating ways that we could think of a referendum in the future, because I certainly think we're gonna have to go back on eventually. My thinking right now would be that we shouldn't do it right now, that we should do a little more research, do a little bit more, see what happens and see where we end up. But I think we're not far away from doing it, I just don't think we should do it this year.
Thank you. Mr. Dean.
Thank you. I totally accept the referendum decision by voters. And one of the things that I learned was, we in our administration really educated the public. I mean, you all were working 24/7 and the voters, for whatever reason they had, voted it down. And we have to respect that. And I love the path that the administration has taken by increasing the size. And I heard that from parents that that was fine with them and then of course we would need more resources for the kids. But it ebbs and flows, the population in Montville has always had. And so taxes are important to folks and we don't want to be taxed out of Montville. So voting, the vote against it was an eye-opener for some of us, but we have to do what the will of the people wants and believe. So not only do I not see us going out for a referendum in this year, but I don't see us going after it in the next couple of years unless it's an emergency type of situation. So those are just my feelings.
I just, I appreciate your comments, just wanted to remind people, just you said emergency, just, it always takes two plus years, maybe three years. So just keep that in mind, emergencies are three years away, so when you have the emergency, it's three years to build, you have to be.
But you have to go out for a referendum, then you have to get the contrast and after the building, and it is definitely three years. And by then, that kind of situation can be very critical. And then we're talking 30-plus kids in a classroom, no teacher wants to handle that, you know, it's unfortunate, but anyway, I'm sorry. Do you have any other questions or comments over here? Karen?
You know, my perspective is, what is, is, and what will be, will happen. Regardless of any reasons why the referendum failed, it failed. And I feel strongly that we should not go out for any referendum until we have an opportunity to sift through and figure things out. And if that means that class sizes get increased, or if that means that there are trailers, that's what we have to do, we have to house our students. And I hope that our administration will be very creative in providing the space needed and the staff.
Point, yeah. So a couple of things, first, could you elaborate on the ideas investigated? Thank you for doing a slide up, I think you have several questions. The second point, moving eighth grade to NTHS. I don't remember hearing the discussion about that particular pros and cons. Since there was nothing in the referendum that would help the czar, how would moving eighth grade to NTHS then helpful? So I understand the thinking and the issues and problems that you were considering in that idea proposal.
So one of the ideas was if you take the fifth grade and you move it up to the czar, so you have the fifth, sixth, and seventh grade middle school. And then you take the eighth grade and you move it to the high school, and you have eighth and 12th grade. So that would help you because the high school is decreasing and then you add 200 more kids up there, so you have the schools to say of about 1200 students there. With the high school, it would be pushing the limit of a high school, the limit if you had 1200 students there. The problem is when you have an eighth grade, the eighth graders are, there's not a better term, just call them standalone, okay? When you have the ninth to 12th graders, they get integrated, they can take part together, they can take different classes together. Eighth graders are different, they have a different curriculum, the high school students have graduation requirements, things like that. So I would actually have to have almost like a wing, or even bigger than a wing, of, to be able to house all these eighth graders to be onto themselves because they don't get a simulator. What you could do then, and I'm not proposing this, but it just, if you move the eighth graders up, what you could do then, you'd have to maybe reduce ninth, 10th, 11th, 12th grade teachers, increase the class size there to create more room for the eighth graders to actually fit into our middle schools. So you're now taking the follow-up, growing the class size of the elementary school and just moving it to the high school and just pushing those numbers up to higher numbers to fit that, does that kind of make sense? So just move the problem from the beginning to the end, maybe high school students behave a little better for high school days and you have a little more flexibility, but it would require, you know, a lot of staffing discussions and a lot of reformulating what high school does.
Okay, we got a couple more. Throughout the capital plan, I would like to make a suggestion that the term "security vestigial", be changed to "security enhancement". I just wanted to make sure that the administration has the flexibility to make change in security enhancements anywhere in the building that's going to be extremely beneficial, have the greatest impact for a particular school, rather than focus solely on the vestigial. This spitball off the head, what if there's an exterior door for a boiler room that needs to be replaced? And that has a greater impact on the vestigial, I just want to make sure that you guys have the flexibility to go ahead and do that. And maybe the security vestigial is closed home for actually a few months or whatever, so our budget is maintained. And then just to, to Karen, go with what the rest of the board has been saying. We did go out for a vote on the referendum, residents had their opinion, so I think we need to respect that opinion. And at this point, we do need to see how things play out. And I understand that we do have a two or three year lead time if anything does change. But one of the drivers was all the new construction happening down. So let's see what impact that's having to our various schools. And so that we could, if we do go out for a referendum in two or three years or whenever it's appropriate, we have a better idea of the impact and where the college can be messed up. So I would encourage you or suggest we postpone that idea of a referendum until we have more information about what's happening right now and how things are.
Yes, I have a couple of comments. I think we're making, we're combining two issues into one here that are separate decision of each other. One is the space issue for students, which I agree, the town voted, we should go out on that issue for 12 years. The other is, you know, what Mike pulled up is not paying, you know, 100 cents on the dollar for capital improvements is something we can do to, you know, separate apart from solving a spatial issue. And I, over the last month or so, straw pulled everyone I could listen to me, and I had a resounding 100% yes, I would move that, because there were people that voted no for both questions. And I mean, my group of people, his parents, the kids in school, I'm asking these questions to mainly. But I think we'd have a vastly different result if we just went out for either of these questions for alone or something like Mike suggested, where we just package everything that we can get a deal on. Because I think the people in Montville, just like in 2017 or 2018, they voted yes because they like a good deal. And we're not paying 100% of the dollar, I think that's powerful. And also, not getting into the triple digits on the tax increase annually is a factor that we don't bear. So I think going out for something small, no new, new construction, but stick to renovations. And then we kind of doesn't follow, would the auditorium renovations qualify for the subsidy?
It would.
So I could get that something, I get 100%, I get 40% of that, that would be what I would suggest.
I'm gonna ask this one, just clarify a few things with the percentage.
So the question about 40%, you actually didn't get 40% last time. The way that the councilation reads is it's 40% issue required. When we advertised the information, it really wasn't 40%. And the reason is this, because it is 40% of the lower of the two numbers, which when it all comes out and you do the whole calculation, it actually comes out to be 34%. And if you recall, both the bond council and the finance people talked about the fact that it wasn't really 40%, it really was 34, 34 is the highest we could get. Now, that being said, when they actually do the A calculation, it's on the interest and the principal of the debt. And when you add in the interest impact, it does push that 34 number up a little bit higher, but you never actually get to 40%. So that's just the clarification on 40 versus what we're really going. And what the bond council and the finance team was saying at the time is that we wanted to present the most conservative information when we did the presentations for the public, so we used the 34% number lowering it, understanding that we're gonna have this other calculation that's gonna be done in the future. But this was the most conservative position to present off of, so that was for sure. The question regarding the security doors to the boiler, actually, that aspect of doors, windows, hardware, perimeter type of things related to security is already being addressed as we are addressing doors and hardware, it's somewhere. So actually, that's already being considered, it's just being considered in another quarter.
Open your account.
Somewhere there was an error.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, well, there are no other, no discussion on another comment. One more time, if we did go out for something, you know, limited, you know, it frees up our entire capital reserve budget now that we have to do some of these other projects and we can keep our schools, you know, top-notch and in great shape for years to come. I think it gives our administration so much more flexibility going forward. Thank you. Oh, you have something else? Just leave and say hi? Okay. One more one, okay, and then we're gonna move on.
Okay, it's the 34% state aid. We talked about the referendum, the commission money, we talked about the state aid from the money that we run for the referendum. But we said something, which I can invite Ash, for any project, it doesn't have to be a referendum, any project that you submit against state aid, you're doing these security vestigial or just capital reserve, would you also apply for a state aid?
No. It only applies to, it applies if the state offers a grant that it needs. So the rod grants that we've been talking about, that was a grant state offered to us and they said as part of the deal, we'll produce 40% and you can do 60%. Except for those events where the state decides to offer that kind of deal as part of a grant, the only other way you can tap into that 40% is if you go for a referendum.
Well, I think the general feeling up here is not to go for another referendum, at least in the near and near future. We can look into other options, but I think right now we're just gonna be holding the course over. And the team and the foreman are gonna be trying their best to figure out where to put the students and address the current space issues that we're having and anticipate to have. Let me just add, on a lighter note, some of you have gotten a note from Woodmont School about Reed Cross America. Some of us go there every year to Reed Cross our street to the classroom, it's March 7, looking forward to it. And with that, I will ask you, are there any other public comments, so our next, last?
I have one, I have a question for a public person.
You have a public comment?
I have an item before a public, I do like new items.
Okay, please, Karen.
It's that's my year again. And we live a life, we do a world education to re-up our commandment, so I'm gonna sign this up. And we can talk about education some other time, just to let you know.
We don't get paid for our position, okay?
Everything's such.
Yes, absolutely. It is one organization and I wholeheartedly support that. We will now move to our seventh public participation session. Anyone with a comment, come on up. Give us your name, address, and your views on the schools of your nature.
Hi, hello from here, my name is Lauren Maria. I'm 121, looking out to Woodmont. I have two children from this system. My daughter is fourth grader at Woodmont, my son is tenth grader at the high school. In addition to making other two students in our district, I also work with therapy, so I'm the founder of the therapy center. Our offices in Montville and other in Jersey. And my staff and I have worked with families for children and teens and their families in Montville, surrounded by parents for over 12 years. As most of us are aware, there is a mental health crisis amongst our children and teens. I have been passionate about understanding the research regarding the impact of smartphones and social media, psychological, social, and emotional wellness in our children and teens. And I've presented hundreds of programs on this topic to parents and students at schools in New Jersey. Smartphones, you know what they look like, have become deeply ingrained in our lives. They are designed with the most modern technology and the most advanced persuasive behavior of science that creates a product perhaps designed to engage the user as long as possible. We've all experienced addictive qualities of smartphones, they are in essence distraction devices. And who are most vulnerable, who do you all, our children and our teens? Last May, the U.S. Surgeon General issued an advisory about the effects of social media use on mental health. I've heard stories from students and faculty that highlight these concerns. For example, at the high school, students walk in the halls in between classes not making eye contact with their peers. Why? They're looking down for events. During the few minutes at the end of a class before the bell rings, the room is not buzzing with chatter. Why? There are no phones. At lunchtime, the high schooler who's hoping to make a new friend is unsuccessful at engaging peers in conversation. Why? There are no phones. A recent study called "The Worldwide Increase in Adolescent Loneliness" concluded that over 30% of teens report high levels of loneliness at school. Allowing our high school students to have smartphones during their school day interferes with their ability to focus on academics and greatly hinders their social and emotional development. I'm here today to propose an evaluation of smartphone policies in our district. I'm encouraging the continued enforcement of students having no access to smartphones at the elementary and middle levels. And I am proposing that Montville Township High School adopt a phone-free policy. There are now many districts across our country who are starting to adopt phone-free policies at the high school level. A Philadelphia high school principal reports, kids are now paying attention and they're also interacting in ways they hadn't before. We have a beautiful courtyard that we were using before we had the phone-free policy, and now we're using it. An English teacher here at City High School said, it's a game changer, it's night and day, actually, kids faces it. In many districts where surveys have been conducted, the majority of parents support a phone-free policy. There's a myth that having phones in schools is good for student safety, in fact, it's the opposite. Many law enforcement officers say that having cell phones can hinder safety because it distracts students who should be focused on the instructions from the adults in their environment. An article by leading social psychologist and researcher Donovan Hayne. An article by leading social psychologist and researcher Donovan Hay has followed the headline, "Get Phones Out of Schools Now, They Keep Learning, Start Relationships, and Lessons For Long." I propose introducing the idea of a phone-free high school during the remainder of this current school year by implementing some phone-free names, so that students can become familiar with the concept. I propose starting the new school year in September with a new phone-free policy. This would require a small investment in phone lockers or a product like Yonder, which are lockable pouches controlled by the school administration. These have been successfully implemented at thousands of schools globally with phenomenal results. A superintendent in Western Massachusetts said, "Teachers are also the threat." Quote, "The feedback has been unbelievable, they were like, this has changed the culture of our school and in our classroom discussion."
And you're almost, you're almost not completely good.
Concluding, let's not let Montville Township fall behind, the research supports it, and our own common sense as parents tells us this is the right approach. I would be happy to make myself available as a resource, help support an initiative towards phone-free high school. I truly believe that implementing this policy is essential to providing an environment where our students can thrive. I believe it could positively impact our students' academic success, aid in their social skill development, and improve their mental health. Thank you so much for your time and your tip.
I, I too hate cell phones, Dr. Foreman.
Thank you for coming out, and thank you for your fight against this issue. So, mental health is one of our district's initiatives, it has been for the past several years, and this year has been different. We have teen mental health, educating our parents as well as students about mental health initiatives. And we're starting a new initiative with the high school, with therapy homes, they're going to put it into the school, helping with anxiety and a lot of things like that. We do have a board policy committee that's going to be the next one, within the next two weeks. So you've said your piece, and they go over that, and we'll be talking about this a little bit more, so I appreciate your time.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you.
I, I just have, I just want to share some information on a simple gadget called Flip Lock. I don't know if you've ever seen the commercials or not, but they're safety devices that can be placed on doors that, whatever the impact, and you want to take the door out, it will not open the door. It is A P A, and we've received proof of required code. If you want to write this down, it's fliplock, which is F L I P L O N dot com slash pages slash school safety, so, school-safety-test. There's a gentleman, a retired police officer in the New York Park, who sells these products, I'm not quite sure how much they are. Joe, Joe and I are going to try to set up a meeting with him to see what other devices he has, that are simple and safety devices that maybe, while you're working out the financial part, maybe this could be a simple solution to some of the doorways at, in the various schools. Just another comment, that this last campaign season, I think I hit about 1,000 doors across the board, Democrats, Republicans, Independent. And a lot of people were very concerned that the safety question is number two. And I think that really turned a lot of people off to the entire budget, that safety was number two, not number one. Thank you.
Okay, Scott, are you coming up?
Yeah.
You are, I'm all concerned.
Scott Rialdo, Oxford resident, High School History Teacher Association President. I thank Dr. Foreman for that slide presentation, thank the board for the discussion that followed. When will you be able to post that presentation to the district website? Yeah, tomorrow. Tomorrow, right. Sure enough. Great, thank you.
Okay, are there any other comments, questions in the public? Seeing none, as promotion close.
Sure.
Thank you, good night, everyone.